Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Now for the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, April 21st, and the time now is 9:02. Notes for this public hearing were disseminated, they emailed to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Wednesday, April 7th, then followed by April 19th, and today is Wednesday, April 21st, and the time now is 9:02. Committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 85-36, introduced by myself, an Act to amend Section 15301 of Article 3 and Section 15407, both of Article 4, Chapter 15, Title IV, Guam Code Annotated, relative to reaffirming the independence of the Guam Ethics Commission. I acknowledge the presence of my colleague Senator Joanne Brown attending this public hearing. General rules for this public hearing, those testifying on behalf of Bill Number 85-36 will be recognized. An invite to the panel, we have in our panel Mr. Kinga. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopy. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes, but we'll allow additional time as needed. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once, once you are done, I ask that you remain in the room for additional testimony as may be desired by the members of the committee. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda, which is Bill 85-36. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual's testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in their removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony, and will be asked to leave the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, and then you speak into the microphone. You state your name and your title for the record. We now begin to discuss Bill 85-36. My colleagues and the people of Guam, Bill 85-36 is an Act to amend Section 15301 of Article 3 and Section 15407, both of Article 4, Chapter 15, Title IV, Guam Code Annotated, relative to reaffirming the independence of the Guam Ethics Commission. The people of Guam desires to ensure that the center of conduct is upheld by government officials. The Guam Ethics Commission has been dormant for many years after it was first established in 1996. I was not reactivated until 2019 via executive order. It is deemed necessary for our island to have an agency that will ensure that our government officials are upholding the highest standards of conduct. Our people will no longer remain silent and allow officials to do whatever they desire, ignore the consequences and impact of their action. This bill will allow the Guam Ethics Commission to properly execute their duties, without influence or inference to accept complaints, conduct investigation, and render judgments free from any potential conflict with government officials. Such independence of the agencies recognized by this bill. We are elected and trusted by the people of Guam, and their trust should be upheld and not disregarded because of improprieties, and the Guam Ethics Commission will be the entity to ensure such trust is upheld. I'd like to thank the Guam Ethics Commission for proposing this legislation, and working to ensure their mandates are fulfilled, and doing their absolute best while working with very minimal staff. I am asking my colleagues to support the Guam Ethics Commission by passing Bill 85. I'd like to also recognize the presence of Senators Sabina Perez and Senator Chris Duñez. I'll now ask the panel to go ahead and make their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairmen Sinagustin. Half a day, Chairman Sinagustin, to Senator Perez, Leader Duñez, and Senator Brown. My name is Jesse Kinga. I'm the Executive Director for the Guam Ethics Commission, and I've brought along with me Mr. Donovan Alger, who just started on Monday as our recent hire for the Ethics Commission. So I'm throwing him in the deep end with me as we go through the process with the legislature. I'm here, I submitted written testimony, I will read that testimony now into the record. "The Guam Ethics Commission offers testimony in support of Bill Number 85-36 COR. The Commission believes the bill is necessary to affirm the independence of the Guam Ethics Commission. Bill 85-36 is a positive step in protecting the investments made in standing up an independent ethics commission, able to address community concerns of potential wrongdoing by government officials entrusted with public resources. The Guam Ethics Commission's mandate is to uplift the public's confidence in government employees, programs, and operations by ensuring the practice and promotion of the highest standards of ethical behavior in the government of Guam. The Ethics Commission should be granted the opportunity to fulfill its mandate well into the future without any fear or retribution by any other office or official through Bill Number 85-36. The Guam Ethics Commission was first established in 1996 by the 23rd Guam Legislature via Public Law 23-105. It was later abolished by a subsequent Public Law 26-76. However, recognizing this unintended action, the late Speaker Vazenti Ben Pangolinan, through Public Law 27-141, revived the Guam Ethics Commission. The Commission remained dormant until 2019, when the first appointees were nominated by Governor Lou Leon Guerrero, and later confirmed by the Guam Legislature. The Commission is grateful for all the support received in achieving milestone accomplishments, such as putting in place a full complement of Commission members, receiving its initial appropriation in the FY 2021 Budget Act, and the selection of an executive director. The Commission looks forward to continuing this progress. Furthermore, the Commission requests that the body consider the following amendments, which would remove the Bureau of Budget and Management Research from applying any budgetary controls, and the Department of Administration from withholding allotments on any appropriation made to the Guam Ethics Commission. This is identical to previous language adopted to promote the independence of the Guam Election Commission, and similar to exclusions made for agencies like the Office of the Attorney General, the Office of Public Accountability, among others, to ensure their independence. The inclusion of this amendment identifies and closes a potential backdoor that any future administration may have to suppress the independent and apolitical work of the Guam Ethics Commission. As such, the Guam Ethics Commission respectfully requests the following amendment be added into Bill 85-36. Under subsection 15407, the Executive Director and Ethics Commission Staff, Section A, the Guam Ethics Commission may employ such persons as it deems necessary for the performance of its functions. They shall submit an annual budget request to the legislature for its required operations. To add, one, the Executive Director shall submit an annual fiscal year budget to the Guam Ethics Commission for review and approval no later than January 31 of each calendar year. Two, the Guam Ethics Commission shall review and approve a fiscal year budget necessary to meet all the Commission's statutory requirements and abide by all policies and procedures set forth in this title and its rules and regulations. Three, the Guam Ethics Commission's Executive Director shall submit the approved annual budget for each fiscal year no later than the date prescribed by Ilha Hesla Turu in Guahan, and shall include a detailed breakdown of the funding level necessary to meet all of its statutory requirements and abide by all policies and procedures set forth in its rules and regulations. Four, the annual Guam Ethics Commission budgetary appropriation, approved by Ilha Hesla Turu in Guahan and signed into law by the Governor of Guam, shall be exempt from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, Office of the Governor of Guam, budgetary allotment control, as generally provided in Section 1303 of Chapter 1, Title 5 of the Guam Code Annotated. Five, the Guam Ethics Commission may draw against their respective appropriations as needed to meet their obligations in accordance with a drawdown schedule that the GEC submits to the Director of Administration, no later than October 31 of each fiscal year. If the Guam Ethics Commission fails to submit its drawdown schedule by October 31, the Director of Administration may withhold a drawdown request for the current fiscal year until such time the Commission submits its drawdown schedule for the entire fiscal year. The Director of Administration shall not for any reason withhold any amount appropriated by Ilha S. La Tour in Guahan to the Guam Ethics Commission. Overall, the Commission is in support of Bill Number 85-36 COR. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the Guam Ethics Commission, and if I could provide further information, please feel free to contact me. This is Jesse Kinga, Executive Director.
Thank you, Jesse. Does Donovan want to speak on behalf of the Commission, or is he just here to assist you if needed?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
All right. Senator Brown, do you have any questions you'd like to pose to the Executive Director?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly appreciate the idea of making sure that the Ethics Committee is free from exterior influence, from the government or government officials or things of that nature. I think we can all understand that, but I have to say the amendments being put forth to me are just a bit much. You know, the judiciary is supposedly free from political interference, but I don't have the judiciary coming in and reading a whole litany of protections with regards to their budget that we're supposed to put in place to the degree that is undefined. I don't know who in the government of Guam has an undefined, you know, budget for whatever they need for their mandates. I appreciate the effort put forth, but I have a big concern about that, because nobody has a limited budget in the government of Guam. And while I recognize the Ethics Commission has a very important responsibility, it's no more important than many other responsibilities in this government within which we serve the public. So I have to say upfront, Mr. Chair, I have objection to the, you know, five, six points being put forth, most of it related to the budget and an undefined budget. Ultimately, it's the responsibility of the legislature to determine what that budget is in the government of Guam, and I don't think that needs to be defined in statute, because that's no different between the Ethics Commission than the rest of the government, to include the judiciary of which, you know, we're assuming nobody has influence of being able to call up and influence decisions that are made by, by judge and justices of our Supreme Court and our, our lower court here. So while I recognize the importance of wanting to ensure you have the respective funding to do your job and mandate, I don't think it's any more important than the rest of the government of Guam, and I don't think it needs to be prescribed with regards to the legislation essentially that's being put forth to identify that the Ethics Commission is to be independent. Independent means perhaps independent from exterior influence, but not independence from the government, and most importantly, not independent from the people. So I just want to put that comment forth, Mr. Chair, because while I understand the important mission of the Ethics Commission, I don't think it's, it's above or beyond other key responsibilities we have in the government, and I don't think the financial appropriations need to be outlined step by step by step by step with no defined limits. So I just want to put that forth, because the same argument can be brought from the Department of Education, and they can say the very same thing. Every single department in the government of Guam can come forth and say the very same thing. But again, ultimately, it'll be the decision of the legislature, assuming the, the executive signs it into law, to determine what the budget is of the Commission and everything else. So I just have to say, I think, I think that would be an unnecessary component to, to add to the bill that you've introduced. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Perez, do you have any questions to the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Kinga and Mr. Donovan. Is that correct? Yeah, so I just, I guess I have some questions regarding, so the, in the bill, it states that the Guam Ethics Commission shall be an autonomous and independent commission, and so I guess in looking at the other examples of autonomous agencies here on Guam, they have revenue, they're revenue generating, and the other thing is that they do have authority to procure, and so I think that's some things to think about when we're talking about autonomous, being an autonomous agency or commission, is that, is there revenue generating opportu, is there revenue generating, revenue generated from this body? The other thing is, you know, the procurement authority. To be truly autonomous, you would need that, and I don't see that in this particular legislation. Have you, I guess the question is, has that, I guess, thought been discussed within the Commission?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, Senator Perez, it's your bill, Bill 94-35, that would provide the Commission to be somewhat semi-autonomous, in the sense that giving the ethics and government program to the entire government of Guam workforce will provide a steady revenue stream to support the function, albeit not completely, but will provide some additional supplemental resources.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kinga. In the bill itself, we, it was amended to basically require, mandate the ethics training. It, it did not include the, the part about the, the funding part, so that was, you know, the idea was that the appropriations would be the means to, to obtain the funding, and so I guess that the concern is, you know, I guess the funding obviously is, is an issue, and, you know, you don't want that to be a means to control the Ethics Commission, and the importance of the autonomy, I think, is important in establishing and enforcing, you know, ethics issues. I think, I see that in regards to, you know, autonomy, I think there's still some kinks that need to be worked out in regards to this Commission, and, yeah, I think the budget, budgetary process is there to kind of balance the needs of the government, and, yeah, I think I agree with the sentiments of my colleague that, you know, we have to weigh all these considerations, unfortunately, right?
And Senator Perez, and to Senator Brown's point, because I wish to clarify the proposed amendment, we do not disagree. In fact, the power of the purse still resides with the Guam Legislature. It is the Guam Legislature's innate power to provide appropriations to the government of Guam as a whole. If you reflect on the five points provided, it isn't that the Commission would have its budget, the full appropriation as requested. It's clearly identifying any appropriation made to the Ethics Commission would not be subject to the budgetary controls of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. I can speak to our current fiscal year appropriations. The Ethics Commission is subject to, like most government of Guam agencies, a reserve in our annual appropriation, and we already don't receive much. So what we'd like to see is that liberty to be able to use the full budget. Imagine, if you will, this 20% reserve is standard, but if the Ethics Commission has an increase in investigations against any particular administration, whether this one or in the future, and that administration has this opportunity to leverage BBMR to withhold even more funding. The proposed amendment suggests that in statute, the Ethics Commission will not have that sort of blanket pressure upon them, so that they're liberated to do the independent and apolitical work. But in no way does it suggest that the Ethics Commission and the Ethics Commission alone could provide for its full budget, and that the legislature simply has to provide for it. We recognize there are limited resources. We just want whatever resources are identified by the legislature, that we have the liberty to use it to the full extent in order to exert the powers that we have.
Okay. Thank you for that response. Okay, I'll reserve my questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Duñez, do you have any questions?
Yes, maybe more of a comment prior to that, Mr. Chairman, and with the highest degree of respect towards yourself. I believe Bill 85 should be aptly titled "The Fiscal Autonomy Act of 2021 for the Guam Ethics Commission." Mr. Kinga, Director Kinga, you know, you and I go back. I have a great deal of respect for you. I know that you followed governmental operations through your entire time of education. As a matter of fact, I think either yourself or your brother served as governor for the day under the Guam Department of Youth Affairs program, and so I want to say at the outset, I think you've developed well, and that you have a great deal of understanding of governmental operations. I think what my colleagues have expressed here is the fact that the government of Guam, you know, has limited resources, and especially now, you know, we're, we're looking at great opportunities ahead, but we always know and understand that great shortfalls as well can befall us. In your presentation, prior to just asking you one question, I, I want to reflect on an interview that you had on one of the media stations, and I think you did really well in terms of expressing your views on the Ethics Commission, and, and you even discussed another piece of legislation, which is not on board today for discussion, on the possibility of elected members. Jesse, what I heard you say was that you understand that you serve at the pleasure of the Board, and I'm speaking to this because of the discussion of autonomy on the Ethics Board. You, you believe you serve at the discretion of the Board, but you're quite aware, though, that the, the current structure is the Governor appoints the Board, the Board is confirmed by the legislature, the Board serves at the pleasure of the Governor, yes?
I don't believe that the Board serves at the pleasure of the Governor upon their confirmation by the Guam Legislature.
The Governor can ask for a Board member's resignation at any given time. Are you aware of that?
I am aware in our statute that the Governor can remove a member for cause, but that the Governor would have to provide such cause for removal.
We're going to have to research that and discuss that some more, but I don't believe, I believe the chief executive has authority to remove or to ask for the resignation of any member or any Board at any time for any reason. I don't believe the Guam Ethics Commission is, is separated from that. I believe that the structure that is currently under, that exists, is that those Board members serve at the pleasure of the Governor, and I, and I say that only to get to one thing, because I think you made this point during the interview, and it's, it's very, it's very apropos to this, this particular bill. You stated that you worked for the Board, and the reason why I made that, 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 you know, brought that to your attention, is because I don't think anybody is under any illusion that the Governor makes the recommendation to the Board in terms of whom they want to see sitting in a position. Of course, the Board makes the ultimate decision, but the reason why I asked this of you is because I've had to make many long drives before down to Adluq, contemplating on my position and, and positions that I've taken before as an administrator in this government. And so I just wanted you on the record, because I heard you say that, that you realize that if you have a difference with the Governor, then it's your decision at the end of the day, because the Governor could ask the Board to, to reconsider your, your position, correct?
The Governor has the ability to make any request that they wish, but the Board would like to build a Chinese wall between themselves and the front office in order to effectuate what would be the intent of establishment of an Ethics Commission. That relationship shouldn't be non-existent in order for us to really be able to practice and put into practice what the intent is of the law.
Okay, but I'm, I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you believe that, and I'm glad that that is your understanding, but I just wanted to be sure, because similar to this bill, when you build this in, to this bill, saying that, that, that the BBMR has no purview, if we were short nurses, if we were short police officers in a critical way, if we were short of, of, of anything that's, that's needed within, within our, our health system, our public safety, our education, that was critical, would you still stand by the fact that your budget is, is locked in and cannot be appropriated for any reason, at least a portion of it?
Senator, whatever portion is held in reserve, it's insignificant compared to the total appropriation made by the legislature for the entirety of government of Guam. As an example, the general fund alone represents $664 million in appropriation, and the Ethics Commission received $194,000. So that's rather minuscule compared to the entirety of the government. If the government finds the need to support the hiring of additional nurses and teachers, it should and would achieve that, but I don't think it could be achieved by withdrawing or withholding any appropriation to the Ethics Commission, because our funds are really small.
See, and that's where I'm going to have a difference with you, Jesse. I believe every penny in the government of Guam counts, and I, and I've been in a situation, Jesse, where we've actually rolled back salaries and done a 32-hour work week for the entire government of Guam. And while you may not think that $197,000, and maybe 20 or 30 or 40% of that can be significant, I believe that the taxpayers of Guam believe that every penny is sacred, and that if we did this for the Ethics Commission, then what message are we sending, as my colleague Senator Brown said, to other agencies that would say, "Don't touch our, our budget"? And see, this is a mentality that, that I want to put on the record here right now, that anytime we take a position, that the totality of the government of Guam budget is so enormous that just my $10,000 or just my $20,000 doesn't matter, that is a mindset that is a problem, because in, for, for the purposes of what we do here at the legislature, and what the people demand on a daily basis for police on the streets, for teachers, there is, there is no room for a pervasive attitude that even $5,000 or $10,000 or $20,000 is insignificant to the grand scheme of things. Believe me, I understand the importance of your mission, and I understand that Senator Perez and others have put bills out to make sure that all government of Guam employees understand ethics in government and, and things that we're doing here, but I will not, as a sitting senator now, say that any amount of money is insignificant when we're talking about the true day-to-day life priorities of our government.
And thank you, Senator. I just wish to clarify for the record, we're no disagreeance. I think you and I both have an agreeance that resources are precious, and I wish to clarify also that my position was never that any amount was insignificant. It was that if the intention is to achieve such actions like hiring extra nurses or teachers, that it would be better achieved through other initiatives. For example, a cost to provide for uniforms for one government of Guam agency is double the cost for our entire appropriation. If we deferred just the purchase of uniforms for an entity, another entity, you could achieve twice as much of our entire appropriation. So that was the only point I was trying to make, Senator Duñez.
That's a great example, Mr. Kinga, and perhaps inevitably, one day, you're going to be on this side of the table, and you will make those arguments, and you will make a great point with regard to finding examples such as that. But the fact of the matter is, I'm talking about a mindset, an attitude, a discussion of, I could make those comparisons all day long. I could say if we didn't drive government vehicles only three days a week, we could save so much gas money that we can funnel all that money to the Ethics Commission. There's, there's thousands of examples that we could use in our government in terms of talking about the, the, the resources of our government and how we could, you know, accomplish more. But the fact of the matter is, what I'm alluding to is a mindset, a mindset that says, "This is locked in stone. Do not touch this." And that the idea is, is that, and the reason for doing that is because it is so insignificant to the grand scheme of things, is a mindset. It's not about the dollars and cents. I could deappropriate $30,000 from my legislative staff tomorrow, or budget tomorrow, and introduce a bill and, and give it to you. And, and the fact of the matter is, that might be a prudent thing in a situation such as that, but I'm talking to a mindset, and I'm hoping you can understand where I'm coming from. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Moynihan, did you have anything you wanted to make, ask any questions to the panel, if anything, Senator Moynihan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the, for your write-up, Jesse, and I apologize for my tardiness, so I'll be happy to talk to you offline after this meeting, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could provide one final point to the body, and thank you so much for having this.
for having this public hearing. Really, sound policy is derived by this ongoing discussion and back and forth between the two parties. That's how we form a more perfect document, and if the bill is imperfect, then I'm depending on the Senators to provide their feedback and derive a solution. What is proposed here by Senator Sinocson in Bill Number 8536 is not unique to the Ethics Commission, and in fact is already practiced for other entities like the Office of Public Accountability. We mirror in a lot of ways our functions, and we're asking for equal treatment. If the government recognizes an entity such as theirs in this way, as well as others, then we're asking to be brought into that same line and that same recognition.
Thank you, Jesse, and thank you, colleagues, for your questions and for all your statements.
Mr. Chair, could I provide a follow-up comment if I can? You know, I appreciate, again, the testimony, but I do have to say, from the perspective, and some of us here have been on both sides of the aisle, we've run departments and agencies and have served in the Guam Legislature, I understand the agenda that you have moving forward to ensure that your operations are, you're able to execute your operations, that your Board is able to execute the operations and responsibilities that have been granted by law. I guess what is a little bothersome for me is you wanting to exert that and educate us on how to budget, and I just don't think there's a need in the legislation as proposed by the good Chairman to declare publicly and through statute the independence of the Ethics Commission. But the budgeting process, again, is something that is and falls under the jurisdiction of the Guam Legislature, and to dictate to us how we should go about doing that, and that you will determine and the Board will determine to what degree the needs are there, you will do so as every other government of Guam department and agency, to include the judiciary, to include the public auditor. And I just think that's really the basic function of government. I know you're well-educated in that, and again, I appreciate your enthusiasm and your interest of wanting to declare that, but I think the language is unnecessary. Now, you mentioned, oh, that, you know, the Ethics Commission should be removed from the allotments of BBMR. If that's really the issue, then that's not what the language is that you're proposing translates to me. That can be added as an amendment to the bill if the members of the Legislature determine that the work of the Ethics Commission is that exceedingly important that we should remove you from the budget allotments to ensure that you get your funds uninterrupted, and that there's no external influence of trying to distract you from your mission by not providing the funding. But I guess what we're trying to relay here is that every department and agency is in the same situation. I'm sure the Guam Memorial Hospital would love the language that you're asking for, but do I think the work of the Ethics Commission is more important than saving lives in the government? No, it's not at the top of the list. Important, but if we're going to look at financial obligations of this government and the performance of what is needed, is it going to be, you know, the firemen that are responding to a fire? Is that more important? Is the work of the Ethics Commission more important than that? I mean, we can go on and on with regards to that, so I'm just saying it's a mindset perspective that I look at a little differently. I'm sure as elaborated by my other colleagues here, they have a similar perspective, and I'm just asking you to think about that a little more. I understand your enthusiasm of wanting to, you know, ensure you're insulated. I'm sure that your Commission members will know how to do that, if they, because they also would have to respond ethically and responsibly, they'll have to be upright citizens in this community and removed from influence, because gosh forbid, if that ends up being the case differently, there's going to be a big issue. But to the point that that's going to be put in statute, I don't agree with it, and I just want to relay that. I mean, you've only been at this job for, what, a couple months? Yes, and I'm sure you probably have many years ahead, but I just have to say that the language that you're proposing, I think, is unnecessary and a bit much. I mean, I'd like to think we all would love to operate like that, but that's not the real world, and that's certainly not with the statutory authorities that we have to budget. We will note the concern, but I'm just relating what those reservations are, and it's just something perhaps you just maybe need to think a little more about. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown, and thank you, colleagues, like I said earlier, for your comments and your questions. Only on one note, for Senator Duenas and to the people of Guam, not all Boards are required to respond to the Governor's call for removal. A very good Board that I was part of, the Governor has no influence, just to make sure you understand that. May influence in the Members, and that's called the Board of Education. The Governor cannot remove any Board member, it's only the Board can do it. The Governor cannot remove the superintendent, only the Board can do it. So I just want to make that one very clear. I don't know about the other Commissions, Senator Duenas, but for the others, I've never looked at it, I never worked with them, but I know the Board of Education is just a different group of folks. But moving along, thank you, Jesse, for your request for amendments. But generally, I guess the bill is pretty much intact, and then we'll work through your amendment, we'll take a look at it, I'll talk to the Members, and we'll see what we'll come up with. Something maybe similar, but not exactly what you requested, okay? But, and exactly what my colleagues have identified, that the statute bodies determines everybody's budget, and some have asked for more, and many of them have gotten a lot less. So let's just hope we can move forward and hope for a brighter future. And again, I thank my colleagues for those present today. Just to reiterate, the passage of Bill 85-36 will allow the Guam Ethics Commission to fully execute their duties as mandated by law. Guam Ethics Commission is essential to the people of Guam, and as I said, will help our community and the government of Guam to identify officials who are not maintaining the highest standards of conduct defined by law. I ask my colleagues for their support on the bill as it sits right now, not the amendments, and I look forward to seeing the change our island needs through the work of the Guam Ethics Commission. Jesus mercy, and for all present today, thank you for your participation. The Committee will continue to receive testimony. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and submit it via email to Senator Joe S. Sinocson at gmail.com, or to my office located at Rand Care Building, second floor, Suite 3, 761 South Marine Court Drive, Tumonin, Guam. Jesus mercy for your attendance and participation in today's hearing, and for those at home, thank you for watching. This public hearing on Bill 85-36 is now adjourned, is now 9:39. And thank you. Thank you, Jesse, thank you, Donovan, and my colleagues. And then we will, in a few minutes, we'll begin the hearing on Bill 89-36. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back. Okay, Ed, let's turn it on. Half a day. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, April 21st, the time now is 9:48. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated, they are emailed to all Centers and all main media broadcasting outlets. First notice was given on April 7th, followed by April 19th, and today's April 21st, and the time now is still 9:48. Committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 89-36, introduced by myself, and I amend, Section 4703, D12 of Chapter 4, Title 12, Guam Code Antedote, relative to increasing the threshold, the total cost of purchase from $300,000 to $350,000, and to exclude other costs imposed onto the purchase of a home. Like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me today, I have Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Jim Moynihan, and Senator Chris Duenas. The general rules for this public hearing are those testifying on behalf of Bill 89-36, COR will be recognized, and are being recognized right now, I'll introduce them all. They are Ms. Edith Panglinen, the now new Director, am I correct? Your title, Executive Director, or is it just Director? Edith?
Acting.
Acting, okay, well, we'll treat you, we're going to treat you like the Director, ma'am, okay? So we'll work with that. And you have also present, we have, let me see. Well, I'll ask you to introduce them before you testify, okay? Written testimonies shall be submitted to the Committee, and we have your testimony, Ms. Panglinen, for photocopying, and they may be read. Lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes, and we'll also allow you additional time, Ms. Panglinen. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony once, once you're done, you may be asked, remain, I'll ask you right now to just stay, just remain in the room for further questions by the members of the Committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. We will be discussing only Bill 89-36. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any Senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of the general rule will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be asked to leave the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, that you're speaking through the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. We'll now begin to discuss Bill 89-36. Good morning again, my colleagues, and to the people of Guam. Bill 89- Bill 89-36, COR, is an act to amend, Section 4703, D12 of Chapter 4, Title 12, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the threshold of the total cost of purchase from $300,000 to $350,000, and to exclude other costs imposed on the purchase of a home. As our island and population grows, the demand for housing is rising as well as the price of home construction. We may have to increase that even a little bit more. This bill increases the threshold of the total cost of purchase from $300,000 to $350,000, and will allow more families to avail the first-time homeowner assistance offered by the Guam Housing Corporation. This bill was in consultation with the Guam House Corporation as they have recognized the decline in application for the first-time homeowner's assistance program due to the increases of prices of homes. The pandemic showed the desire of our people to own homes. Amidst the pandemic, it was the right time for many families to purchase their forever homes. On Monday, April 19th, 27 families were awarded the first-time homeowner's grant. Congratulations to our island new homeowners, and may you enjoy the fruits of your labor. Having to own a home is special as it reminds us of the hard work, sweat, and tears that was endured in order to purchase or build a home. I want to thank Guam Housing Corporation for the hard work ensuring that our people are still given the assistance they need as they purchase or build their forever homes during this pandemic. Guam Housing Corporation is encouraging families to take advantage of this program as funding is still available to be awarded to families. I ask my colleagues for their support in this bill as it will provide the assistance for more families to attain their dreams of owning their forever homes. Zeus Massey. Now I ask Ms. Panglinen to please give her testimony, but please identify, recognize who's with you? Your staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee that are here today. To my right... To my right is the manager for housing, which is Angie, Angela Camacho. And to my left is Mary Guerrero, the housing administrator. And to her left is Alicia Young-Guero, our accounting manager. So we're here this morning to testify on the proposed bill that is presented. So if I may, thank you, and half a day. See Zeus Massey for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 89-36, an act to amend subsection 4703, D12 of Chapter 4, Title 12, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the threshold of the total cost of purchase from $300,000 to $350,000, and to exclude other costs imposed onto the purchase of a home. I appear before you today in support of Bill 89-36 with recommendations on certain sections of the bill. The current mortgage limit under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, calendar year 2021, stands at $356,362. As we are all aware, the median price of homes on Guam continues to rise. Increasing the threshold to $350,000 will bring us in alignment with HUD limits and will allow applicants access to a wider inventory of listings when looking to purchase a home. Also proposed amendment, Section 4703, D2, refers to a comprehensive home building contract made by the owner of the land in Guam, or a person who will, on the completion of the contract, be the owner of the land in Guam. To have a home built on the land not to exceed $350,000 and shall not include down payment, land, and closing costs. We recommend that the cost of land should be included for any transactions in which the borrower intends to either purchase an existing house and lot, or to construct a home on a lot to be purchased as loan proceeds will be utilized for the purchase of the lots and will be encumbered under the mortgage. Exceptions can be made for those transactions where the applicant owns the lot, the lot has been paid in full, and is unencumbered. Additionally, we have reviewed the current statute 12 GCA, Chapter 4, Article 7, and refer you to Section 4703G, eligible transaction amount adjustment. The section reads, "The board shall, from time to time, but not less than five years, conduct a study to determine the cost of the median price of housing in Guam, and shall, by resolution adopted by the board, increase or decrease the amount of the eligible transaction to reflect changes in the market." We recommend approval, removal of the, but not less than five years requirement as the last adjustment was made via public law 34-100 on May 16, 2018. Should the reference section remain, it would make the adjustment less than five years, which would be contrary to law. Further, we support the removal of the five-year requirement as it will allow the GHC Board of Directors the flexibility to conduct studies and make recommendations as they become necessary based on market conditions. So, Mr. Chair and members of this committee, this concludes my testimony, but we are here after two for the committee members to ask any questions from the management and staff.
All right. Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Panglinen. Senator Perez, do you have any questions to, like to pose to Ms. Panglinen?
Not at this time, but I do support the efforts to try to align with the federal government in regards to, I guess, assuring that our local homeowners are availing themselves of potential resources to purchase their first-time homes. So I am in support of this. I guess no questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Before I ask any other colleagues to ask the question, you know, I got a text, and I spoke to your chairman, Mr. Flor, Mr. Frank, and he wanted to, I'm not too sure, I gotta look at my bill again, but I think we're looking at maybe considering retroactive to 2020 because there's many applicants that could have gotten assistance, couldn't get assistance because of the cost. That's something to consider. So I just wanted to make that known for record, is that there, Mr. Flor had mentioned, he texts me, because he's taking care, for my colleagues to let you know, he's taking care of a family member in the hospital. He wished he could have been here to testify. He wanted to allow, to turn back the clock to January 1st, 2020. Because many, many applicants that did apply, and many that couldn't get or wanted to apply also, couldn't meet the threshold, it's like the home was $300,000 or $301,000. And that's what the predicament they're faced with, and Mr. Flor wanted to make sure that they were all being considered, that everyone would be considered, because everyone needs assistance, and if Guam Housing has the financial ability to assist, then so be it. So that, that may be something that, I just wanted to pass that to my colleagues so that in case, Senator Perez, you wanted to ask a question in relation to that, you can ask, you continue on, and then we'll move on with our next colleague.
Yeah, perhaps a question did pop up, so, what is it, do you know what the median price on Guam is for homes?
The median price right now, as we, I presented, is $356,362.
And as far as the federal government, what kind of subsidies are available for first-time homeowners?
Subsidies, we do have loans under Guam Housing that we can avail. We have, like, some lending institutions, as you know, today, the prevailing market is 200, or 2.78, which is very low as compared to previous years. So Guam Housing can only increase ours to no more than 2% above the prevailing rate. So in order for applicants to come to us, they need to be denied, one denial from the lending institution. So once they come to us, we can also prequalify or have them go to our program, but that's only if they get denied from, from the other lending institution. So right now, our loan portfolio is very small other than just mostly the first-time homeowner's grant that they have been applying, because most of them are going to the lending institutions, that we currently have 11 of them that are participating in our grant. So because of that, if I do recall, the one that we just issued a grant this past Monday, we had one, or two, from Guam Housing that sought our assistance because they got denied from the other institutions. So if that can answer your question, is there anything that...
Yeah, yeah, I am concerned because there definitely is a demand for affordable housing here in Guam. I think there's more demand than supply, and I think anything that we can do to support first-time homeowners, you know, get a dwelling. And I know the rental prices, too, are an issue, right? So has there been any assessment to see, you know, the cost of purchasing a home is actually more feasible than actually renting? Is that something that has been looked at?
I would encourage our people, our island people, to avail seeking for a home mortgage versus rental where their investment should be realized if they do get a loan to either purchase or construct. So the average loans that we process for this first-time grant is less than $200,000, if I may, Mary, is that correct?
It's less than $200,000.
If you can please state your name so that we know who's speaking, because I'm trying to transcribe this.
Mary Argararo, the loan administrator for Guam Housing Corporation. The average is about, not more than, about $200,000. And even at that, the applicants are faced with that challenge of trying to find something to purchase, and if they do pursue construction, there's still a challenge there of trying to find a construction company that would complete the construction and not at a higher per-square footage, because then even at that, there was, there's not a lot of construction companies that are available because they're being used as subcontractors for the larger projects. So at this time, GHC applicants, their biggest challenge is finding inventory, whether it's to purchase the land and build, the challenge being the construction activity, or to purchase an existing home, which again is over $300,000, leaning more to the $350,000. And so that has been the challenges, it's, they're not coming back even after we've determined that they're, they prequalify for an amount, but what they prequalify for is not necessarily that there is a supply, inventory for that amount. So that's where we're at with, with, you know, having to increase it. And because the federal HUD's loan limits went up to $350,000, GHC's loan limits would also increase. So now that the interest rates are very low, your monthly payments could be lower, and they would be, the applicants then can conceivably be approved by the banks through conventional means because the rates are a lot lower. GHC is allowed to add an additional 2% above the prevailing. So doing the math, if they're gonna come to Guam Housing, and it's probably gonna be issue relative to credit or not having the down payment, that they would be denied. But in terms of repayment, because the prevailing rate is lower, their buying power would be higher with, through conventional means if they didn't have any other issues. So we're seeing that not a lot of people that we refer to go get that denial are not coming back because they're actually being, they're able to get the loan through conventional means. And that's okay, because we're not here to compete with, you know, the banks. We're here, we're here as an alternative in the event they can get it through conventional means.
Thank you, and does this apply to condo units? Is that part of the purchase opportunities?
Yes, it does include condominiums.
And then the other thing is, does HUD have anything, any program that allows for cooperative buildings? So let's say a whole building can be purchased, and that could be then condoized for different families. Is that a available option?
We can provide financing up to four, four units in one, and that, that would assist in bringing down the cost. Again, the issue, who's gonna build, and finding, you know, property. But GHC is exploring what other means we can look into to, to bring down the costs as well.
And yeah, I guess the thought, too, could be existing buildings that are vacant, underutilized buildings that can be modified for residential purposes. That potential is another potential I see in providing more supply for affordable housing. And as far as the waiting list, how many people are on the waiting list for loans?
For the first-time homeowner?
None, we, there's sufficient funding right now, that there was a waiting list of about 28. We recently received 500-plus on, from the street funds, and that cleared everybody on the waiting list. And we still have sufficient, an amount of about $277,000 for those that may want to apply.
So what you're saying is that 500 people purchased homes, is that correct? Because you had 500 on the waiting list, and then it was cleared?
We had 25 individual, 28 people that were on the waiting list, and it was for the purpose, they weren't determined eligible, they were waiting for funding.
And so is it safe to say that they are home, first-time homeowners now? Wonderful, wonderful, and so now you're waiting for a new, a new crop of applicants? Okay, so yeah, this, this public hearing is definitely an advertisement, too, as well. If you're interested in purchasing your first time, first home, there's money available. So yeah, thank you. Did you want to add something?
If I may, just not to, late in the day, Monday, we were already receiving phone calls from customers because I publicly came out and said, invite your friends or encourage your friends and families to come and apply because we do have the money available for a first-time homeowner's grant. So even yesterday, Mary herself was answering phone calls coming in, inquiring about the grant. So I think there's a lot of people now, I guess, with us coming out on Monday, it kinda, like you're saying, advertised that we do have the means and the funding to pay out for the, for the grant, for first-time homeowners.
Zeus Massey, thank you very much for all your answers, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown, do you have any questions to the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to inquire to clarify because in some instances, I guess currently the land is included as part of the cost, and then you're recommending it not being, that it be included. I just want to get clarification, it's not included in the total price, but you're recommending it be included. I know there are different circumstances, I mean, someone could maybe own the property already, and they're just, you know, trying to get a loan to construct the home, others, you know, they might be buying a home that's already built, that has the land. I just want to get that clarified with regards to the $350,000 amount.
Okay, because we also, if, if Mary may, may expand more on that, we, we learned that some of them, if, if you have a land, of course, your buying powers to, for just the construction loan, so all of that can go to the construction versus, because land right today is so expensive. So not to mention, we're also working with the Chamor Land Trust, landlords that were given leasehold. We were already on that path of getting into a MOU with Chamor Land Trust, USDA ourselves, to help our, those that have been given Chamor Land Trust. So that's where most of those loans that they will, and they can only come to Guam Housing, by the way. The lending institutions will not lend Chamor Land Trust recipients.
Sure, understandable.
So because of that, the buying power is basically on the loan, if you have a land already available. For those that are just outright purchasing maybe a condo or a home, that's where we see that the, the price has really gone up in terms of, it's really high when they come in with their applications, and it included closing costs. So sometimes the closing costs, if I, I review, some married were like $11,000, $13,000 of... of closing costs at the bank, depending on the loan amount. So closing costs takes a lot for applicants when they go and seek loans for their first time to purchase.
Yeah, especially if you get a construction loan, they get you twice.
Yes.
So I just want to clarify again with the land issue. Is it included, the price of the land included or not included in the 350? Because there's two, you're asking it for it to be included? I just want to get that clarified because it's not clarified in the information before.
Since you're, for the purchase of an existing home, that purchase price is for both the house and the lot. To be consistent, if you're, if your intention is to buy the land and build, then we're saying include the cost of that land that you're purchasing. And that's just to be, you know, you're, you're including it for an existing home. So why, you, you, I recommend that you include it when you're purchasing the land and opt to construct the house so that way you can control. And there's not a lot, necessarily a lot of land out there only for them to develop. Now, if they own the property, we're saying then exclude because there's no, it's unencumbered, they paid for it, they've inherited it. So just base it strictly on the construction costs. But at any time the applicant is going to purchase, that cost should be included as well, just to be consistent for those that are doing existing homes.
And do you see with the current market out there, if, if someone is, you know, let's say they're going to purchase the lot and, and construct a home, do you think that will still, can still fall in that $350,000 amount?
Could be. If, if, if they purchase a $60,000 lot, they can control the cost of the construction by reducing the square footage. So I think they have a better chance of trying to be within the 350,000 versus an existing home, that, you know, the seller probably want to get whatever they can in the appraisal value. I'm just, I'm addressing it as being consistent to each applicant. You know, if you're requiring to purchase, then you, it should be.
No, no argument from me, I just wanted clarification. And then, you know, of course, these are first-time homes, they can always add on to them later on or they can always upgrade perhaps if their family expands and, you know. I mean, we all want the top line at the beginning, but then when you see the price, it kind of makes us all shy away. Might take a few more years to get there, but thank you very much for your response to my question. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Moyle, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you, panel. Appreciate the explanation, the written testimony. The 300,000, that, that has been on the books, I could have missed it, but how long has it been 300,000? Since, since when? How long has it been 300,000?
2018.
Oh, 2018?
May of 2018. So it's less than five years as the law has stipulated.
So you're, on average, you're looking at every five years reevaluating the, this?
If we can, we are actually asking if we can remove the requirement where the board will, from time to time, I guess, have the flexibility to conduct the studies.
I'm sorry. Say, say it again?
Okay. So in the law, it does say that there's a five-year requirement to come in and request for either increase off the, the current threshold. But at the same time, we are also asking to remove the five-year requirement. So because right now we're here because it's less than five years since the last increase, which was from 250 to 300,000 dollars.
By removing the five-year requirement, possibly if you need to reevaluate it sooner than five years, then that gives you the option. And if you don't feel necessary, then you just come at, when it's necessary, not necess, not every five years to evaluate. So that gives you that possibility as, as, if I understand from Mary correctly, it's right, it's the cost of the, it's the cost of the goods to build the home. And as things develop and as our island grows, maybe it's going to be a lot sooner than five years that we had to readjust this.
That's our experience right now. That's why we're here today to, to ask for the, I guess, to revise or change the, the law.
350, you feel comfortable for, for some time, I suppose? That's comfortable for you versus, you, basically you went up 50,000 versus 100,000?
It was 50,000 at, at a time, right? We went from 250 to 3,000, 300,000, now it's 350.
The, the last adjustment was a $50,000, a 50,000 increase. And now we're looking at another 50,000, but in support with, with, it's, it's in a line with the loan limits for, for a single family and that's from HUD. When we say remove the less than five years, it could work both ways. An adjustment could be decreasing because that's what the market may now reflect. So having Guam Housing's board, of course, it's going to be supported with a study and we can recommend, management can recommend to the board that they either increase or decrease, but always in a line with what's, you know, the industry, the, what's out there in the industry. So we would like to see that it's, it's, it just be left, you know, instead of allowing it. Because it wouldn't be fair if, if it went, if it shows a decline, then if we have to wait five years again, then, you know, there'll be opportunities for the lower income now to apply for the grant. And that would be, you know, it'll be better if we just, because now we're going to be competing. Funding would then be the issue. Right now, it's not an issue. But when it decreases and more individuals are, are eligible for the program, and if we don't decrease it, then we're going, it's going to be competition, who's going to get, it's going to be in a first-come, first-served. So in order to ensure that we assist those in need of, of the assistance, then we would recommend to decrease. And so we're just asking, allow the board with the study to make those adjustments. Because in accordance with the law, actually, I think the board has that authority to just go ahead and do it by way of a board resolution, provided there's a, a study to support whatever they're recommending in terms of adjustment.
When you say competing, you're referring to the applicants?
Yes. Well, the applicants right now are, you know, because there's, there's not really a lot in the lower income or the lower prices, and we're seeing that the trend is there, it's increasing. These, these are still first-time homeowners. These are still your, your, your working families that are trying to realize their homeownership. So because it's trending upwards, then, you know, we, we see it, it's in a line with the loan limits that we are allowed to approve as well, we're, we're, we're in support of the increase. We're just asking that maybe remove it so that we're not bound with every five years and just ensuring that when the need is there to make the adjustment, the board can act accordingly and not having to wait for five years.
Appreciate it. Thank, thank you for that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Duñez, sir.
Sisus Mossi, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly am in full support of Bill 8936. And I have to admit on the record now, seeing the Guam Housing family here, I'm mahaling. I'm going to have to come visit because that was my last duty station in the government and it's so nice to see Ms. Guerrero, Ms. Leon Guerrero and Edith, welcome, and Ms. Camacho, welcome. Of course, your new family members, I'm an old family member. Mr. Chairman, I think this is, is very important legislation and I may make an amendment on the floor to increase it to 375. And so I want to get some feedback on that. But just so that the general public understands, as Ms. Guerrero and Ms. Leon Guerrero and, and the team has, has mentioned here, one of the concerns that I've received from folks lately who are competing to try to, to deal with the, the extreme rise in cost with regard to construction costs, with regard to homes on the market, even fixer-uppers now are 300, $325,000. And, and, and the, and one of the things that exists that worries me, Mr. Chairman, is that there are investors who are coming to Guam and it's becoming, the investors that are picking up the properties and displacing our people who are right on the edge of being able to close that loan. And this is why this program now is the signature program of the Guam Housing Corporation. The Guam Housing Corporation, when the interest rates were really high, was, you know, the portfolio grew and, and, and it should be subsidized and everything else. But like Mary said, Guam Housing Corporation is not in the business of competing with the lending institutions outside. They are a high-risk last resort. But this program is really what they're all about, aside from the rentals and everything else that they're doing. And I know they have some, some programs coming down the line. But what this does, Mr. Chairman, and members and colleagues, is, the fact of the matter is that person who has gone and qualified for 330, $340,000, they may have a half-acre piece of property and they're going to build that house, but they're just, that getting over the hump of that closing cost or by Guam Housing giving them that closing cost as the grant, now they have a chance to, you know, buy a refrigerator, buy a washer and a dryer, or maybe something else, it's a water heater even if it wasn't included in their construction, to make sure that that, you know, especially when they're that closed and, and affordability is just right there, that they have that little extra edge to, first of all, close the loan? Because that's what the banks and the lending institutions and the realtors are looking to Guam Housing for, to close that loan. And, and the second is, of course, because this helps service the loan in terms of the, the repayability of the individual. And, and the only reason why I say, Mr. Chairman, that I, I may look to my colleagues to entertain an amendment to 375 is because what HUD has, has indicated here, that we're already over the 350 in terms of the average median. You know, maybe it'll be acceptable, maybe not. But what we're really talking about here is trying to make sure every one of our people, now that this is considered affordable housing at $350,000, the affordable housing piece is a completely different conversation. And I respect one, one of my colleagues who brought that up, to try to get, and, and she's right, there's things that we need to do to, to use properties and, and to help Chamor Land Trust, that, that's a separate conversation. These are people who have the ability to borrow and probably even have decent credit, but they just don't have the capital with the rising prices. And so this puts our people back in the game, those who are right on the edge. Imagine $350,000. What kind of salary do you and your wife or your companion or otherwise have to have in order to qualify for that? So, Mr. Chairman, a very good bill. Thank you for, for Guam Housing being here. I only have one question, maybe I'll just go to Mary on this or, or Ms. Leon Guerrero. I know that when I was there and I, I left my post, there, there was an obligation to Guam Housing Corporation for its initial investment for this program. Is that still on the books and it is something that we can help you with in the future? I don't want to put you in a bad political position, but I just want to put it on the record again. Or is that still a recognized revenue for Guam Housing that should we, you know, have that revenue available, that we can make available so that you can expand beyond the current balance that you have as, as cheated funds?
Yes, it's still in our books. It is the initial seed money to fund this program. We, we did provide the 500,000, it has been expended. We are still looking at alternatives to, I mean, looking at a way to, to request for the, the reimbursement. Actually, there is in our mandate, there is a section there that allows us to request, I guess during the budget, submit, it, it states some, somewhat to, an appropriation is authorized for a grant to Guam Housing for any activities that are non-revenue generating. And at the inception of this loan, I mean, this program, we, we weren't allowed to even get the 10% administrative. So it was considered a non-revenue. So we are putting things together in line with what's available in our statute to formally request for that reimbursement of, of the 500,000 and other activities that, you know, we, we acknowledge we have to be involved. But at the same time, we are a revenue generating corporation.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I want to work with you on this upcoming budget. Maybe not the entire 500,000, but maybe we're going to recognize some revenue for Guam Housing that is due to them, that they fronted the general fund for this program. And as the administr, Loan Administrator just mentioned, this administrative fee now is one of the key things that's keeping Guam Housing going. We need Guam Housing. We need Guam Housing for affordable housing. We need Guam Housing for veterans' loans as a co, a loan. We need it for Chamor Land Trust. So even though they're not issuing a lot of loans right now on the conventional side, we need them as a corporation to help our people. So their sustainability is very important, Mr. Chairman, so please work with me on that to see if we can, you know, reimburse them. Like I said, maybe not at the full amount, but maybe we set out a schedule for the next couple of years to make sure that they can continue this very vital program. And with that, Sisus Mossi, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to rise in full support of this bill.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. To the panel, Ms. Panglinen, the bill asks for up to 350. There was a recommendation 375, but HUD require, is at 356. Would you, would you want to state that maybe raise or give? See, one of the catches, I guess, is, is by allowing the board the flexibility, that 350 can go up if we just move to five years, correct? And it will take care of what Senator Duñez brought, the 375. It'll give you guys the, it'll give the folks the option and the flexibility because it can go up or down, okay? So, so maybe that needs to be part of the amendments?
Okay.
And then the next one is the bill asks for not to include down payment and closing costs. I noticed in your letter you put down land, but you also stated that land not be included because sometimes some of them own the land, so it's not included automatically. I just want to be very careful, I just want us to maybe just focus, maybe, Ms. Panglinen, that closing costs and down payment would capture? Because when anybody borrows, and I'd just like to, I don't know if you are aware of it, but I was a Guam Housing applicant and I got a loan from you guys, okay? And maybe none of you were employed then, that was in the early 70s, okay? So for my colleagues and the people of Guam, I am, and I, I am a recipient of Guam Housing 's support and assistance. So I am in support with whatever way we can assist the people of Guam. Okay? And this is the early 70s when I got it. It was still the IDC building and it was Martin Beneventi was the guy in charge way back then. All right? But if you, if you want to take a look at, just, just take a look quickly at that, at your statement, you, you put down down payment and land and closing costs. It's on your...
Yes.
I mean, ma, maybe, maybe you don't want to add land because land could, is part of the purchase anyway when you buy a house, if you don't have, if you don't own the land. But when you put the package together, it's already inclusive of land, even if you have a dollar sign or not on the dollar of the land. Because it could be included with the 350,000 land and home, right? Or are you saying you want to move the cost of land and make it just be the home? Then that means the, the value of the, of the, of the loan is actually could be 400,000 or 500,000. You, you see where I'm coming from? Because I know for a fact where I live now, property homes are, land alone is 90, 120,000 per half-acre in Jigu. I know that for a fact because the area where I live and I'm like, wow, amazing, good for the value of my home. But I'm just saying, if you move the value of land from this bill to not be included, is that your intent? Because, only because you put it on your testimony. You put down a, you're very specific, shall not include down payment, comma, land and closing costs versus the bill was only talking about down payment and closing costs not to be included. I just want to make sure we're, I, I cover the bases with your testimony. You, you see where, where I'm at, Ms. Panglinen?
Yes.
Or you want to strike out land?
Okay.
And just leave it at closing, down payment and closing cost?
And if that is okay, Mary, I, I think, I know she explained it earlier when...
Mary, could you, could you explain that? Because I know for a fact that some people own land, but they need assistance to build the house. And normally when you, when you do apply, the question's always asked by all lenders, value of the land, cost of construction. You merge them together, that's the total cost. Buying it or not, it's always inclusive.
Okay, this is for, remove the land if, if they own the land. And, and there's a, there's a difference when you're looking at land cost versus land value. And there's a difference when you're looking at land cost versus land value. If we put land value, it could be higher because if they secured a lower price. Now, we were concerned about including the cost of the land if they have to purchase the land, and that's only to be consistent with those. So with here, we can, we should remove land if we're only looking at the cost.
The reason why, Mary, is because on the bill, it's, shall not include down payment and closing costs. That's normally the major factor for all assistance, right? Homeowners, that's really what you're after, right?
It's part of the law already.
Because we never, we never put land on the bill. I just want to make sure we're taking care of the folks, our first-time homeowners, versus the testimony now is to add land.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I think this is where Mary and the team is going, that they're trying to make sure that those who would qualify don't get pushed out because of the fact that you take the threshold above what the total amount is to make them not eligible for the program. So if you take out land in an instance where, say, they own land or in situations like that, you're making sure that their loan amount is just the construction cost so that you've got more people that will be eligible to hit the 350 threshold that we're proposing. If you include land, it may take a construction cost of 350,000 plus 50,000 for the land, and now their house is 400,000, so they don't qualify for this program. So it's trying to make the least, the situation where it is the most affordable situation where if you include the land, it pushes them out, and you would only do that if they own the land. So that's why it's set up to where if they're buying the land included, because that may also bring them into the realm of being in that, kind of what they call the sweet spot. This is one of the reasons why this has had to move, you know, up in particular now, because a lot of those got priced out of the qualifying. So that's, I think that's where you are with the land included or not land included, is for overall financing costs, correct?
It's the financing amount. And if you look, if you look at the bill, it did say that on item two, the owner of the land or a person who will on completion of the construction be the owner. So that translates to them purchasing the land. So you're looking at two different situations. They own it, or they're going to own it when they finish the transaction where they built, they purchase the land, and then they're building on it. So the second sentence is there, if you're going to, if you're going to own the property after you've purchased it and you develop, then there's going to be a cost of the land. So we just want it that if they own it and it's unencumbered, it's theirs, don't include the value of the land, we agree with that. But to be consistent with the other allowed transaction, then include the cost of the land if they're going to purchase the land and then build. And that's in line with the...
So, Mary, what you wanted to say then, after that sentence, is shall not include down payment? And it's there already, land and closing costs?
Mr. Chair, the...
It's already there on the bill.
Right, the current law does state, shall include down payment, land, and closing costs. So our proposal is not to include and shall not include down payment, land, and closing costs. So that's the difference between the...
The reason why, Ms. Panglinen, I was questioning it was on item one, not two. Item one did not include the land. Line two does.
Right.
So you want it, I mean, it's still okay then, the way the bill is written then, correct? Mary?
Yeah.
Don't minus one and say, no, it's one, it's one area. A contract made for the purchase of a home in Guam would not exceed, right? Shall not, and shall not include down payment, closing... Then when you go to the comprehensive home building, it's different. Home building contract, it will not include the purchase of land through the 350. You see, there's two different parts of that. So I want to make sure we understood that. I didn't want to change the line one, right, item one, to say land when already it's on the second part, it's comprehensive home building. The other one is purchasing a home. You got the land. When you purchase a home, you're buying the land.
Right.
Different when you're building.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we in agreement?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Mary?
When you purchase a home, yes.
If anything, just submit, submit another letter and then we can tweak it, okay? We've got time. Got time to tweak this, to make the appropriate amendment, because even Senator Duane is in support, and most of my colleagues will be in support. First-time owners, you've got, I think, the body's support. I would have to say that. It's just now, we just got to make, word it right. And I like the 375 that Senator Duane has brought up, but if we allow you the flexibility and get rid of the five years, then it meets the 375. Because if the market goes up and you're chasing it, it's not going to make sense. Do it, make the changes you need, and bring it down as you need. And I think that will work perfectly, okay? Ms. Panglinen?
If I may, Mr. Chair, retro this back to January 2020. I don't know if the funds that we currently have will sustain that. So I think it should be perspective.
Well, I think, once you give me the report, because I do see how your money is, and as I spoke to the chairman, you do have, you have the ability. And then as we work on the budget like Senator Duane has brought up, so you can recover some funding that will keep you going. Because there are folks, trust me, I get calls, and they said, I could have. I only got this little, and I needed this to get over the edge, but I said, okay, let's see what we can do. That's when your chairman met me, and like I said, I got his text asking that it be retro to January 2020. Send me the additional amendment, a letter, so we can, so we'll know where you stand financially. And then we can work from that. Because to ask you to actually open your books right now, we're not at the budget's hearing, so let's not go there. It's only about this bill and we just move on, all right?
Thank you.
Are we in agreement, generally in general agreement, right? Okay. That being said, I'd like to thank you, my colleagues, but those present today. The passage of Bill 8936 will allow more families to avail the first-time homeowner's assistance, and the threshold will increase. I encourage all families to consult Guam Housing Corporation and the service they provide. You guys do great service, no doubt. I look forward to reporting this out of committee so we can ensure we assist more families who realize their dreams of homeownership. Jesus Massey, that being said, the committee will continue to receive testimonies, and I'll be expecting a new letter from your office. And address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations and Housing and submit it via email to senators@guamhousing@gmail.com or to my office located at Rand Care Building, second floor, suite 3, 761, Submarine Corps Drive, Tumuling, Guam. Jesus Massey for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. This is public hearing on Bill 8936-COR is now adjourned. It is now 10:39. And folks, be safe and have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.